Good evening. I'd like to open tonight's meeting. This is a regularly scheduled meeting that is scheduled for Monday, May 28th. Please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted to us by our residents. Mr. Duke has an excused absence this evening, and I will ask Mrs. Fisher to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council minutes and the workshop minutes for February the 28th, and I do find them order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Okay. We do have a couple of special presentations this evening. I would first like to call on Gwen Owen, Chairperson of the Board of Community Relations, to make a presentation about the MLK Writing Contest winners. Gwen?
She's right back.
She's what? Yeah. Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of the Kettering Board of Community Relations to recognize the winners in the...
Turn your microphone on, please. There's a little button.
Button.
Push.
There we go.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Kettering Board of Community Relations to honor the
winners in our Martin Luther King Essay Contest. The Board of Community Relations sponsors this contest each year to encourage students to really think about the values and legacy of Dr. King. The contest is open to all students in Kettering middle and high schools. This year's prompt invited students to write a persuasive speech of 500 words or less with the goal of motivating fellow students or people in general to work together toward greater racial justice and understanding. I think that our middle and high school winners are here tonight to read their essays. But before I introduce them, I also want to recognize we had three honorable mentions: Violet Hamilton, Jacob Himes, and Sabrina Nguyen. So now to read her winning middle school essay is Violet Wright, a student at Van Buren Middle School.
Welcome.
Hi. So my contest entry was...
Can you come a little closer to the microphone?
My contest entry was titled "Make a Change: Collaborate." The Latin verb "co" means "together." Labor is the meaning of this word's core. Together, work. Together, we work. We work together for more improvement in justice, happiness, and equality. Today, in terms of racial equality, we have gone far from how things used to be. We have come to this point, but as I said, there is always more room for improvement. If you look around, you can see that everyone has things in common that make them human. Everyone has a heart, brain, blood, nose, and skin. If you were to take one of these factors that makes someone human, eye color, for instance, and discriminate unfairly because they don't have, say, gray eyes, it would be absurd. It seems ridiculous, but this is the exact same thing that happens with skin color. The color of your eyes, skin, and hair aren't something that's controlled. People flat-out disrespect others because of something that is obviously out of their hands. Picture this: A car is going 35 miles per hour on a 35 mile per hour speed limit road. Air-piercing sirens from police vehicles trail behind the car. Both vehicles stop, and you can see a police officer go towards the car. Inside is a family that is black. This family was just driving down the road, going the speed limit, and following laws. Despite this, they were still pulled over. And I've seen this happen too much. Even if I've only seen it once, it would have been too much. Things like this really make me angry, but it won't help anything getting upset. It won't help anything unless something is done. Something needs to be done. Ben &amp; Jerry's Racial Justice really helped me realize that the solution is working together. If you see something, do something. When it's recited, it gives me hope. We invite you to join us on a journey to better understand issues of race in our country, to acknowledge the existence of systemic racism and the implicit biases that all of us carry, and to ultimately commit to what Reverend Barber called in all of us to do: join hands and move forward together. I dream that this gives you hope as well. Teamwork makes the dream work. This cliche saying is something that people can actually aspire to. If we're all on the same page, we can learn to accept each other and change. Life would be boring if everyone looked the same. Exact replicas would make it dull. Everyone is different in personalities and interests, but the same in value. Thank you.
Gwen, Violet's mother is here? Is she here? Could we acknowledge her?
Violet's mom?
Yes.
Just wave.
Right there. And I understand her teacher is also here, Jillian Glassell?
Oh.
All right. Thank you. Be very proud. Okay.
Now to read her winning high school essay is Leah White Wright. White, sorry.
Wright and White.
She's a senior at Fairmont High School.
I would also like to point out, while Leah makes her way up here, Leah is our first two-time winner. She won last year for the high school level as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Duval.
For Black women, this is a story about a Black woman named Regina Smith. Ms. Smith was born on July 14, 1976. She is a single mother of three and has excelled in every project that she takes on. She is fierce, outgoing, independent, and most importantly, my loving mother. Growing up, I know it was hard for my mom... Sorry. I know it was hard for my mom to provide for myself, two siblings, and also herself, sometimes having to work two or three jobs just to pay for the bills and give us food to eat. I didn't know this growing up because she was so persistent in making a better life for her children than what she had had for herself. She always had a poker face and had to keep this confident composure even if it was so exhausting to have to work her life away, but she did it anyways. You won't hear about her successes and her struggles and think, "This lady is a superwoman." You won't hear about, on top of all the jobs she was working, she also went back to college and got her degree. You won't hear any of this being in the spotlight because at the end of the day, she is a Black mother, and this is what is expected of Black women in American society. The most disrespected person in America is the Black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the Black woman. The most neglected person in America is the Black woman, Malcolm X. Black women have been at the head of the civil rights movement since before the movement even began. Black women are constantly fighting for equality, justice, and respect. There is no winning in this society for the Black woman because if she speaks up, she is angry. If she speaks up, she is aggressive. If she speaks up, no one will care to listen. The Black woman is supposed to provide. She is supposed to work until she has no more energy left, and even then, she will still not amount to the rest of society. She will still be at the bottom and continue to be disrespected. "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere," Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We need to do better as a community. We need to come together and protect our Black women because at the end of the day, they will always give their last for anyone. MLK spoke about injustices back in the 1950s, and we are still having the same conversation today with little to no progress. We may be integrated in school systems. We may be using the same bathrooms, but we are more divided than ever. Ms. Smith should not feel as though the weight of the world is constantly on her shoulders, along with numerous other Black women and Black mothers that may have a similar story. We, as a nation, have to support the women that do the most for us for a better future. Thank you.
Yeah, proud mama, standing up. Stand up. Excellent speech, and I'd like to also point out that you're president of the Black Student Union at Fairmont. You're a cosmology student in the CTC, and you are heading off to college next year to one of a ton... That's the way it's written here. A ton of HBC...
HBC.
Yeah, I was looking for the initials. They're still... HBCU. A school that she applied to. A ton of them. You can only go to one, so... But good luck and continue the great work. All right. Thank you. Okay. We have no public hearings tonight.
Please.
Oh, yeah. How could I? It could be done. I do it. We do have a second public proclamation here tonight, presentation from the Kettering Police Department. It's a swearing-in ceremony, and there's Chief right there, right in front of my eyes.
There are two things I'd like to do tonight. One is to introduce our five new officers and to swear them in, and the other is to introduce the two new dispatcher supervisors that we have hired as well. So we'll start with the officers. I will call each one's name. They'll come up. I'll tell them a little bit about them. I'll tell you a little bit about them. Then we'll swear all five of them in at the same time, and then we'll move on to the supervisor dispatchers. So Justin Blackwell. Justin is here tonight with his wife Hillary, his daughter... Daughters Eden and Hazel, his mother-in-law Jennifer, his brother-in-law and sister-in-law Tabat and Leanna, and his nieces May and Riley. Justin comes to the Kettering Police Department after serving three years with the Dayton Police Department. He holds an Associate's Degree of Arts... He holds an Associate of Arts Degree from Sinclair Community College. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Jeremy Bronham. Jeremy is here tonight with his wife Abby, his son and daughter-in-law Dylan and Megan, his son Kayden, his mother Nancy, his mother-in-law Jenny, and his father-in-law Vince. Jeremy served one year with the Clear Creek Township Police Department and 13 years with the West Carrollton Police Department prior to joining Kettering. Jeremy obtained the rank of Sergeant while he was with the West Carrollton Police Department. Welcome, Jeremy. Craig Sanders. Craig is here tonight with his wife Katie and stepson Crew. Craig comes to the Kettering Police Department after serving seven years with the Miami Township Police Department. He holds a Bachelor Degree of Science and Criminal Justice from Eastern Kentucky University. Welcome, Craig. Peter Nickel. Peter is here tonight with his mother Karen, his brothers Greg, John, and Andrew, and his sister Katie. Peter joined the Kettering Police Department after three years with the Dayton Police Department. He holds a Bachelor of Science Degree in Criminal Justice from Eastern Kentucky University. Welcome, Craig. Mason is here tonight with his son Liam, his girlfriend and her children Lindsay, Anthony, Chloe, and Kennedy, his father Bill, his mother and stepfather Susan and Ray, his brother and sister-in-law Grady and Jenny, his sister and brother-in-law Nikella and Kalib, and his girlfriend's parents Gary and Patty. Mason is originally from Ohio, and after high school, he joined the Army Reserves for four years and served as a volunteer firefighter with the city of Kettering. I have in my notes here to insert firefighter joke, but Chief Robbins isn't here, so I'm going to pass on that tonight. Mason joined the United States Marine Corps and served for eight years. Following Mason's military service, he joined the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office in Jacksonville, Florida, and served for six years before joining the Kettering Police Department. Welcome.
Go on, pregnant. Until they're done.
I practiced this yesterday, and I told him I was just going to read this straight through, and then he would know all of it. Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Mr. Blackwell.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution.
The Constitution and laws.
The State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Kettering, Ohio.
Of the city of Kettering, Ohio.
And I discharge the duties.
And I discharge the duties.
Of the office of patrol officer.
Of the office of patrol officer.
To which I have appointed.
To which I have appointed.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to our newest members. You know, you are Ohio's finest.
Thank you.
Whoever coined that.
I believe that was Chief Schriok, I do believe. I would now like to introduce the new supervisors for our dispatch center. As you do remember, last year, council approved for us to create those two new positions, and we now have them filled, and I would like to introduce both those ladies to you tonight. So Cindy McKenzie. Cindy is here tonight with her husband Justin and their sons Bryson and Xander. Cindy has been a public safety dispatcher with the city of Kettering for 18 years. During her tenure here, she has graduated summa cum laude from Millersville University with a master's degree in emergency management. She also obtained her APACA Registered Public Safety Leadership Certification and is a certified dispatch trainer, as well as an emergency medical dispatcher. Cindy serves as a systems administrator who assisted with the implementation of the computer system upgrade, and I can tell you, I'm very thankful for her work on that. Rachel is here tonight with her husband Rodney, her mother Leanne, her father Ron, and her children and grandchildren. I'm going to name it in just a moment. So Rachel comes from a public safety family. Her mother retired from the West Carrollton Police Department with over 20 years of service, and her husband Rodney retired this past June from the Fairborn Police Department. Rachel has worked as a public safety dispatcher for the Fairborn Police Department for the last 28 years. During her years of service, she has assisted with the implementation of a new CAD system, trained new dispatchers and jailers, assisted with the implementation process for E-Warrens in Green County, and has the leads... And has been the lead stack for several years. Rachel and Rodney have seven children: Joshua, Carissa, Zachary, Thomas, McKenna, Catherine, and Xander; two son-in-laws, Ernie and Andy, along with two grandchildren, Wade and Josie. And in her spare time, whenever that is...
I was going to say, when?
...and always traveling and spending time with her family. Our new supervisor dispatchers. And, Your Honor, as you know, when we promote new supervisors, they always get the opportunity to do public speaking.
Just have that note.
Thank you for the introduction, Chief. First, I'd like to thank my husband, Justin, and my sons Bryson and Xander for their support. They've always understood the odd hours of a telecommunicator and have selflessly shared my time with the department. Thank you to City Council and to Chief Protsman for creating this position within the department. I'm looking forward to continuing the outstanding professionalism our center provides to Kettering Police, Fire, and surrounding entities. Kettering Police Dispatch consists of a caring and impressive team of telecommunicators, and I'm delighted to serve alongside them. I've grown up here at KPD, and I'm honored that Rachel and I have been given this opportunity to collaborate with the department in our future growth. Thank you for the chance to implement the overall goal of Kettering Police Department as Ohio's finest.
Thank you very much.
I also would like to thank my family for showing up tonight, and a special thank you to my 90-year-old grandmother who joined us.
Where is she?
She is right way up the front.
Right in there. Okay. Give a wave. Thank you.
I also would like to thank the city and chief for giving us the opportunity and hiring us as the dispatch supervisors. I'm sure Cindy and I are going to work excellently together with the other dispatchers to continue to provide the residents of Kettering with excellent service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're so proud of both of you, and you're well-deserved here tonight.
Thanks.
Chief, you done?
I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody want to leave?
I was going to say, I have a feeling we're going to lose a lot of our audience.
I don't know, but that grandbaby needs that grandma. That's all I can say about that. That little girl needs her grandma. That baby needs her grandma.
Thank you for coming tonight, and please keep in mind that the sound travels, so if you vacate the lobby, that will be helpful. What's she looking for?
That's Joe Willen there in the front row, wasn't it? But he's back to us now? Isn't that him? Joe Willen? Right there. Turn around with the glasses on, right on the other side of the podium.
Who are you looking for?
Yeah. Right there, he's moving now. He's right here, moving across.
Oh, I get you.
That's him, isn't he? Joe Willen, he's on the list. He was on the list. I think we just added him... Well, I think we added him on. Joe Willen.
I hear some of you. She's going to speak.
We appreciate you staying. Is she speaking for one of them?
She's speaking for herself, for her son. I didn't know.
Is it a resolution?
No, no, no. She's going to speak at the end of the meeting. It's about changing tables.
I know why he's here. He's the Dayton Ward Realty's board now, and they want to have... He's the liaison with governments now or something, but he has to come to two or three meetings to...
Okay. All right, I think we'll proceed with the meeting.
I tear it out.
We still have no public hearings tonight, and I do have an invitation to anyone who is wishing to speak to council tonight with comments or new information about any of the legislation on tonight's agenda. They may come down at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Okay? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will now move along to ordinances and second reading, and there are none, so we will move to resolutions. I'll call on Mrs. Fisher to introduce the resolutions.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase television, radio, newspaper, billboard, and internet advertising for the 2023 Fair East Pavilion performance season from various sources. The estimated cost is $159,000. Our budget is $145,000 from 22-00-72-740, and the remaining $14,000 is from 22-00 personnel. And it is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Matt, would you like to make comments?
Your Honor, I think the introduction of the resolution describes it in depth. As you know, we do this routinely each year in advance of the performance season for the phrase "competitive bargaining is not practical due to the nature of this type of purchase," and because many of the sources have fixed rates for such advertising. Be glad to answer any questions, and we're certainly excited about the upcoming season.
Any questions for Mr. Greason? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use sealed bids, competitive bargaining, and negotiated quotes, cooperative purchasing programs, or sole suppliers to contract for the construction of Gentilly Park. The estimated cost is $2,455,000. The amount budgeted is $1,628,000. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason, comment on that one?
Yes. You're well aware the Gentilly Park project has been long on the goals of the city, and it has reached the point where it's designed. The estimated cost of the project with contingency is roughly $2.4 million, $2,455,000, as was articulated. That amount includes a Nature Works grant from the state of Ohio of $141,000, which was previously approved. That would go towards helping fund playground equipment, and it also includes city funding...
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Matt, would you like to make comments?
Your Honor, I think the introduction of the resolution describes it in depth. As you know, we do this routinely each year in advance of the performance season for the FRAZE. Competitive bargaining is not practical due to the nature of this type of purchase, and because many of the sources have fixed rates for such advertising. Be glad to answer any questions, and we're certainly excited about the upcoming season.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Greason? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use sealed bids, competitive bargaining, and negotiated quotes, cooperative purchasing programs, or sole suppliers to contract for the construction of Gentilly Park. The estimated cost is $2,455,000. The amount budgeted is $1,628,000. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason, comment on that one?
Yes, you're well aware that Gentilly Park project has been long on the goals of the city, and it has reached the point where it's designed. The estimated cost of the project with contingency is roughly $2.4 million, $2,455,000, as was articulated. That amount includes a Nature Works grant from the State of Ohio of $141,000, which was previously approved. That would go towards helping fund playground equipment, and it also includes city funding of $2.3 million, $2,314,000, to be exact. The 2023 budget was $1,628,000, and so this includes a supplemental appropriation of $827,000 that will be requested later in the agenda. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution directing the city engineer to prepare and file renewed, recalculated, amended, and/or consolidated assessments for street lighting. This is being requested by the engineering department, and there is no cost associated. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the first piece of legislation in our annual street lighting assessment program. This assessment program is authorized under Chapter 947 of the Codified Ordinances and does require a resolution to be passed as the first step to recalculate the streetlight assessment. Important note, the assessment rates for this year are the same as they were in 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation for the purchase of a dual-purpose police canine and associated equipment. Estimated cost is $10,000, amount budgeted is zero, and is requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Chief, I think you're gonna address this.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have a retirement coming up later on this year. It's canine Jax, and because of that retirement, we do need to find a replacement. Greg McAfee has donated the money through the Police Foundation to purchase a canine and various equipment that we need for that dog. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Chief? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing an additional expenditure of funds for engineering services with HEPI Engineering Incorporated. The cost is $50,000, and this is being requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this resolution will authorize the city to expend funds for engineering services related to various capital improvement projects in 2023, with HEPI Engineering specifically for several facilities projects that are budgeted for this year. HEPI was selected through a competitive proposal process in 2020. This is simply the extension of one of those initial contract periods. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the audiovisual upgrades at the Kettering Rec. Center. Its estimated cost and budget are $55,000, requested by the Public Service Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, let's see. Matt?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes, well, the 2023 CIP budget includes the $35,000 to install new audiovisual systems. This is speakers, monitors, and furniture at the recreation center conference rooms, and $20,000 to replace the existing audio equipment for the water park and the main pool areas. Staff is recommending approval. We believe these upgrades will enhance programming within these spaces and certainly make them more appealing to renters of those spaces.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, for application processing services under the U.S. Treasury's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The estimated cost is $2 million. The funds available are zero, and it's requested by Planning and Development at the Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Matt?
Yes, Your Honor. We've talked about the Stay Put program quite a bit. The Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County have an existing emergency rental assistance program, Stay Put, and they have contracted with Kettering to assist renters who primarily reside within the Kettering Municipal Court jurisdiction. So that includes communities, not just the city accrediting, but other communities that are served by the courts. We have, to date, administered $5.2 million in funding for this program to help prevent or mitigate the impacts of eviction in several communities. Montgomery County has entrusted us with the administration of those funds, and they are now offering the opportunity to administer $2 million in additional funds in 2023 to continue the Stay Put program. We think this has had a significant impact in preventing homelessness that can result from evictions, and we're recommending approval. The funding will expire on December 31, 2023, but there is an option for a one-year renewal. There'll likely be an additional amendment prior to December 31, and we'll take full advantage of all federal funding that may be available to assist our residents, as well as the other residents that are part of the Kettering Municipal Court area.
That's good news. Anyone have any questions? Can't call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city for Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023. I move for approval.
Second.
Matt?
Yes, Your Honor. We have several supplemental appropriations that we're recommending for approval, a number more than several. In economic development, there's a supplemental appropriation, $15,000 requested related to an incentive agreement for a reimbursable grant to B5 Systems, who will be creating five full-time equivalent positions and sustaining their operation here in the city of Kettering. For the police department, you already approved acceptance of a grant from the Kettering Police Foundation of $10,000. You now need to appropriate the funds so that those funds could be expended for the purchase of the canine. For Special Grants and Programs Fund of $2 million, we just authorized accepting $2 million for Montgomery County. We now need to appropriate those funds for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, Stay Put, as I discussed earlier. We also earlier authorized bids, issuance of bids for Gentilly Park. We need a supplemental appropriation of $827,000 for construction of Gentilly Park. The estimated cost, as I articulated earlier, is 2.455 million, while the 2023 budget was 1.628. And I will articulate that we will not move forward with authorization of construction, award, or bid until we are evaluating a number of our bids, giving price escalation, and we're going to be discussing with you how we move forward with each of them, and we're gonna hold some of them so that we, and not authorize them until we have a full picture of four or five of them that are part of a funding package. We also, any questions about...
Nothing so far?
Yep.
You done?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Call the roll. No questions from any of the... Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our resolutions. We have one ordinance in first reading. Who's due to call? Who's due to read that? You, Bob? Time to get home.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction of curbs, sidewalks, driver approaches, and related aperturnances for the Smithville Road resurfacing from Wilmington Pike to the North Corp. Project, City Project Number 02-134.
Okay, first reading. All right. Steve, you want to explain it, though?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance in first reading this evening to levy special assessments for last year's project on Smithville Road from Wilmington Pike to the North Corporation Limit, which included the repair of curbs, sidewalks, and driver approaches. The list of final assessments for the project is on file with the Clerk of Counsel. We have completed the public notice process, and we received no objections. So this is in first reading. There'll be a second reading at your next council meeting. Assuming passage of the ordinance, the period to pay cash for the assessments will be till the end of August, and if they are not received in cash, they will be put on the property tax rolls to begin collection in January 2024. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none, first reading. At this point, we will do certifications and petitions, and I believe that we have a certification. Ms. Kozinski?
Your Honor, we have one certification this evening. Planning Commission is recommending approval of PC 23-001 zoning tax amendment. A public hearing regarding this request will be held on Tuesday, March 28, 2023, at the Kettering City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. Managers' report. Mr. Greason?
We want to report that coming to the FRAZE are a variety of excellent acts, the I Love the Nineties Tour, the Men Use, Richard Marx, and, as you've probably heard before, Nelly. Tickets can be purchased, buy lots of them, to all events at the FRAZE at the ticket office, FRAZE Fan Fair Store, which is located at Town and Country, or, of course, online, FRAZE.com, ETIX.com, or by the charge-by-phone number, which is on the screen, 1-800-514-3849. We want to highlight a major project being constructed by Montgomery County in our community, the water line replacement on East Dorothy Lane. In particular, beginning March 20, traffic will be impacted on East Dorothy Lane for the installation of water services and roadway restoration. This is going to impact Dorothy Lane between Far Hills and Hathaway Road. We'll show a graphic here in a second. The south lane for eastbound travelers between Far Hills Avenue and Hathaway Road will be closed during project. The north lanes, that should read lanes on the screen, will facilitate east and westbound traffic. So through traffic on Dorothy Lane will be reduced to one lane in both directions and maintained during construction. It's about three weeks long. If we could show the next slide, that depicts the boundaries essentially on Dorothy Lane between Far Hills and Hathaway. Any questions regarding that? Hearing none, we also want to highlight that there are a number of efforts being made to bring fiber to the home in Kettering. There are various companies that are currently installing this communications infrastructure throughout our community. What's important about this infrastructure is that it's going to give residents and businesses option for high-speed internet connections and other services, which is great. However, we will endure some construction, and residents should expect to see teams and equipment throughout our city. They'll be doing, in some cases, aerial installations on the poles and in other areas, underground work. We don't think this, this construction work in neighborhoods should not disrupt resident services. If services are disrupted, we'd ask that they contact their utility provider. And of course, the city of Kettering wants you to file your income tax return by April 18. We are available to assist residents in preparing their taxes. We just ask that they contact our tax division by visiting our north building here in the government complex or by calling the number that is on the screen. That is my report, Your Honor, for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we will start with Mrs. Fisher. No?
Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience?
Okay, all right, I misunderstood what you suggested before. It's not in that order. Okay, we're gonna take public comment at this point.
Is there anyone in the audience?
Yeah, is there anyone in the audience, and I know there is, who would like to address City Council at this point? I'll ask them to come to the podium. I'm gonna take the people in front of you, if you don't mind, Terry. All right, thank you. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before City Council? Come on down. Come to the microphone there. You know the routine. These are old friends of mine.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Corcoran. This is my son, Matthew Helton.
Turn your microphone. Yeah, she gets...
It should be a button. Green.
Okay.
There we go.
It's on.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. My name is Jennifer Corcoran. This is my son, Matthew Helton. We actually live at 4513 Nowack Avenue in Huber Heights, and I appreciate the opportunity for us to come to you tonight. We have paperwork. I don't know if I can pass that out after, or how that works, but we represent a lot of things, but tonight we're representing changing spaces. It's a national campaign, and we're trying to bring awareness and advocate for adult height-adjustable changing tables. Not a topic that we typically talk about, but we want to bring awareness to you. When Matthew and I go into the public, there is no place for me to take him to the restroom, and I have to ask, would you do your daily errands, go to the FRAZE, and listen to concerts, go to the Schuster, go bowling to Kroger, when you knew that you had no place to go to the restroom? It's a pretty big issue, and it's not something that I expect people to know about unless we bring that to you. So that's what we're doing right now. We've been working on this since 2014. We've worked through legislation. We've had three bills within the Senate. We've had one within the House as late as 2020. The good thing that happened in 2020 was the International Code Council was put in touch with us, and I've been working with them ever since. We have written building code and the specs so that these tables will be included in the International Building Code 2024, which doesn't mean we've reached the path yet, because now we have to have Ohio adopt the building code, and we are in the process of doing that right now. A few other things that have happened, the governor has put these tables, we call them universal tables, because they can take anybody from babies to adults on the tables. The universal tables are spelled out in the proposed budget. We'll be at the State House tomorrow. We'll be at the State House tomorrow testifying our support for that budget. We will be in front of the Ohio Building Board next week because they're having a stakeholders' meeting because they are in the process of adopting this building code into Ohio building code, and we have no reason to believe that that won't happen. But we are also still just trying to make everybody aware of the issue. I am also contracting with the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disability Services at this time, and one of our projects is, we were, Dr. Combs, was awarded ARPA funds to put these tables in Montgomery County. So, one of my pleasures has been working within Montgomery County to try to determine where these tables will be. And I've actually landed in Kettering, so the Rosewoods Art Center is actually working with us, and it looks like we will be able to put a table within that building. So, I just want, we wanted to bring this information to you. I do, like I said, have some papers to give to you. We have a website. Our Changing Spaces is a national campaign. I co-lead the Ohio campaign. We are extremely active, and we are just getting started. And tables are going in, so I've given you some light reading to do. I do have our website, which would tell you anything and everything you'll ever want to know. If you have any questions at all, I can guarantee you will find the answers on this website. I urge you, as a city, as builders come in, to share this information because what we are finding is when we hit it at construction, it's much easier than a retrofit. A retrofit is not off the books, but it is a little bit more difficult. So, I ask you to urge builders and give this information to them because without awareness, it's not going to happen. Again, at this point, for us to go into public, we either have to isolate if he needs to use the restroom, or he has to be humiliated and changed on the floor or in the back of the van, which is what's happened until recently. So, please consider that, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. The first piece of legislation I ever introduced in the state legislature was to build these tables, and it's great to finally see that after years and years of work. It was kind of an interesting story. It was brought to me by a group of about 30 or 40 students at the STEM School, who, when they heard about this, they took it on as a project, and they just did an awesome job. Unfortunately, I think because they were students, they didn't take the bill as seriously as they should have. It was kind of like seen as an exercise in government, not a critically needed thing. And I've watched Jennifer just fight this battle. But one thing I don't understand is if the international code establishes this, why do we need to do it at the lower level? You'd think it would move up, not down.
Every state has building code, but they don't have to adopt the most recent. So, I believe that Ohio is on 2017 or 2018. The really nice thing that we have found is petitioning the state is really very simple. I mean, we even...
Petitioning them is simple.
But they're even moving it through. So, I think what's happening, what I'm noticing at the state level is that it's already been through the internet, at the international level. So, for them, it's kind of like, well, okay. Because I was actually on the committee that wrote the specs for the tables, and we spent a year and a half of deep research so that we could come up with specs that would meet the needs of the most amount of people possible. So, by the time it's getting to the state, it's been worked on for so long that what I'm finding with our state officials is that they kind of look at it and say, well, the work's already been done. We may as well take this on. So, we're very excited. It's just going to take a long time if we just wait for new construction. So, we were talking with Montgomery County Commissioners. I mean, we're talking to everybody that we possibly can. There is three billboards now that Matthew and I are on. I just went around, and so then one of them is by Channel 2 News. So, if you're out and about, until April 2nd, we're doing everything we can. We want universal tables to be something, when we mention them, people realize what we're talking about because that's the first step of making the change.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye, Matthew. Okay. We will now move on to...
Another speaker.
Oh, Terry, you had your hand. You're coming up. Come on up. It's your turn.
I don't have copies for everybody, but to make Shaun's down, it's more creative.
Thank you.
It's nice to see everybody again.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name's Terry Welker. I live at 15 Napoleon Drive, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. And I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns regarding the proposed demolition of the Dwight L. Barnes High School. So, Your Honor and Counsel, I'm here to publicly state why the D.L. Barnes School should not be demolished and propose a call to action that we can do something about. The main driver of such decisions, demolish great buildings such as this, is usually centered around money. There's no doubt that to renovate the building for the use as a school by today's standards would be cost prohibitive, but that does not mean that there are no legitimate options for saving the structure. Something private developers can do that a government entity such as a school district cannot do is to adapt, reuse the building as housing, senior housing, et cetera, because they are eligible for the use of a variety of state and federal tax credits in the reconstruction process in a manner that makes it financially feasible. It does require some experience, talent, and imagination, but it's entirely within the realm of possibility to create a revived, productive community resource. This would necessarily require the sale of the building and some land. Number two, this building is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and is already listed on the Ohio Historic Inventory created by the Ohio Historic Preservation Office. Dedicated to service in 1930, this building, with its masonry and terracotta, is a supreme example of the Chicago School, also known as the commercial style, made popular in the late 19th and early 20th century architecture. This is a very manageable process. It just requires willingness to do the right thing, preserve our heritage. Demolition of the D.L. Barnes Building would not be received as a wise decision. Regardless of the cause for its gradual depreciation by past neglect, inadequate planning, changing demographics, et cetera, this decision would reflect most poorly on the school and city administrations. Once a building is torn down, it's gone forever. Current and future generations of Kettering and Ohio residents would look at this decision as betrayal of public trust, especially when we know there are legitimate alternatives. Future school levies and property tax initiatives would suffer serious challenges. Lastly, it seems normal to those who are familiar with the city government and that the school system and the school board are completely different from governments, you know, like the city of Kettering, where there's a strict separation of purpose, responsibilities, and governance. But most people, John Q. Public, conflate the school system and local city government. And because of this, if the school board makes such a publicly visible decision to tear down the Barnes Building, one of the largest, most prominently cited buildings in our history, not only will the school board's reputation be stained, but so will the city of Kettering. If the city sits quietly by to only witness without reaction to this process simply because it's the school board's decision to make, citizens can easily blame the city of Kettering for not taking a position. We know that the board and council for decades have had a very harmonious relationship. This could be jeopardized. So, here's my call to action. Number one, reach out publicly to the Kettering School Board to meet, listen, learn, discuss, and share these concerns and the future of our city. Help them find alternatives and a shared path forward that respects our shared values. Number two, pass a resolution to make abundantly clear where the city of Kettering stands on the issue of historic preservation in our city. Number three, pass legislation that establishes Kettering as an Ohio-certified local government to fortify the process of preservation and make it eligible for state grants to study and help with the process. The Planning and Development Department and the Ohio Historic Preservation Office can assist. Number four, finally, pass local historic preservation legislation. To move forward as a city founded on progress, we must demonstrate our pride in our past and care and concern for our forefathers and our friends with millions of shared experiences and stories about places like this building. Thank you. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd care to make at this point? Okay.
Thank you very much.
One thing you did definitely allude to, and we have to keep in mind, not as an excuse, but that the city does not own this property.
Absolutely. I fully understand that. As 22 years of the chief building official here, I'm well aware of that separation. I just know that the public perception is much different.
Right. Well, you're right about that.
I have people knocking, coming to me and saying like, what can we do about this? Well, maybe not much, but you know what? If you don't take a stand, if you don't say something, the silence speaks volumes. And so, I think it's worth trying. And I have spoken to the business manager at the school board there and aired my concerns, learned some things. I didn't want to just say, hey, this is crazy. But I know, in fact, that there are developers in this city who do lots of work like this sort, doing housing with tax credits. Windsor Development, who's doing the fire blocks downtown, is proposing another 500 units down there. And on top, I mean, they're not the only one. There are other good developers about that I know would easily approach a project like this to try and make it financially possible. I just don't want to put up a parking lot. I think this is too valuable, a precious thing, and it'll be like a missing tooth in our city if it comes down. So...
Is the proposal to replace the building with a parking lot?
It's simply to demolish it. Well, and hold the land, perhaps. I was, what they indicated, that they're like, we just want to tear it down because we might want the land in case we want to build a building in the future. That's not that as easy as it said. We certainly don't need that commercially for board offices. I mean, they've got five years left on their lease where they're at right now, and there's, I mean, mothballing a building is expensive. There's no doubt about it. But, you know, to just sort of say, well, we ran out of money, so therefore, we're just going to tear it down because we don't, what do I do that? That's, I mean, as a city, as an architect, a city planner, and I've worked on buildings on the National Register before. I currently sit on a board of a building that's on the National Register, the Westcott House. I know how this process can work, and it is entirely feasible, but it takes some public will to do that.
Yeah, one other complication, which I know you're aware of, is state law requires them to offer it first to a charter school before they can sell the property.
Yeah, and we discussed, I discussed that with them, and obviously, I mean, to use it as a school would be cost prohibitive. Even though they would offer that to charter schools, the likelihood of that happening is about zero.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming forth.
Glad to chat with you. Off the record, anytime, too.
All right. Thanks, Terry. It's good to see you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thrilled to continue to serve the seat of Kettering on the Art and Public Places Committee, which...
Better watch it. You might get appointed to something. All right. We'll go on with the council reports. Does anyone else like to speak before council tonight? Okay. And then I have one announcement before we do council reports. Is there a motion to amend the agenda by adding an executive session after city council reports for purposes of personnel matters?
So moved.
Second that.
Movement second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Now, move on to city council reports. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to start?
Well, I'm going to steal a little bit of Mr. Klepass's thunder and uplift a couple of our small business owners. Mo and Michelle own Harrigan's now, so they're newer owners of that. And as you can see, I have my St. Patty's decorative scarf on today. So, on Friday, it is St. Patrick's Day, so, one, I would encourage everyone who decides to partake in the holiday that everyone becomes Irish on to please make sure you have a designated driver. And then, two, I want to uplift that particular business because they have chosen Neighbor-to-Neighbor Food Pantry as a charity of choice for those that choose to consume the liquid refreshment that looks gold. So, if you want to come visit me while I'm pouring that liquid refreshment on Friday, I would love to see you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
You working inside the tent?
I'm in the tent. I'm in the tent.
Okay. One of our favorite things to do is attend ribbon cuttings in the city, and we had the chance last Friday to celebrate a new business that opened up over in Oak Creek, facing Bigger Road, that part of the Oak Creek Plaza. The business is called Let Them Be Wild, and I was asked, what kind of store is Let Them Be Wild? And just for the records, Let Them Be Wild, in my definition, is they carry a lot of items for children to use that encourages them to go outside and play or enjoy nature. And so, that's the kind of new little business that opened last week, and we sure wish them well in their new venture. A little self-promotion, at the March MBRPC meeting, my peers on the board elected me and several others to another term on the executive committee there, so I'll be fulfilling that task until the end of this year. On the 9th, our new city manager spoke for the first time to the Doorwood Optimist, and he was welcomed into the community. And Terry, he was asked about the school building, too. He knows about it. I'm sure we'll talk more after that. So, thank you, Matt, for attending that. He will have a whole set of dining room glasses in the next six years to go because that's what we always provide to our guest speakers. And last but not least, as Mrs. Fisher mentioned, Friday would be a good time to shop Kettering, wear green. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Just a short update for me. I just want to highlight the Kettering Community Needs Survey that good people out there, I hope, of Kettering, who are people of good character, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, please take that survey. It helps determine how the housing dollars or annual housing dollars from the U.S. government are allocated towards housing development. Did I say that correctly? Okay. And then, you know, glad to see summer around the corner with the advertisement of the Phrase Concerts, Richard Marx, June 24th. I'll be right here waiting for him to come to town.
Mike Grotto.
You have to be assertive.
It's for me.
I know it.
You knew it. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Well done. A couple of things for me. I would just, quick comment about Barnes. I realize there are significant financial obstacles for that property, but from where I sit, you know, it's one of the few Kettering buildings that has some kind of heritage to it, even though I attended its rival when it was a junior high school. So, if the private sector could come up with something, I think it'd be fantastic for the city. I'd also like to add my congratulations to the new officers and the supervisors for the Police Department. Additionally, it's coming up on springtime, and as you drive around Kettering, you see progress going on. Matt mentioned the fiber. I've seen the construction of some housing units in Kettering and also some work on some, shall we call, distressed properties that were that way for years that's finally making some headway in being turned into more productive properties. And lastly, I've got to do a promo. The Doorwood Optimists Club is holding a basketball event next Wednesday, March 22nd. Signups are at 6:30, and it starts at 7:00, and I will be one of the instructors, so please send your children anyways.
Thank you. Ms. Duval?
We are regularly, as a council, given an update on the effectiveness of the Stay Put program, which assists our residents with... Put program, which assists our residents with avoiding eviction. And tonight, we were, we were given that update, and the most striking thing to me is that this program has saved 330-plus people or families, households, from being evicted, and I think that's amazing. And I want to thank Tom Robillard, his entire planning department, especially Andrew Rockman, as well as Rob Scott, Clerk of Courts, who have all done a fantastic job with this program and making it effective and helping who it's meant to help, and I think it's wonderful. Also, we've talked a lot about the police department tonight, but on another note with them, I want to say thank you to both Chief Prossman and, I'm sorry, Chief Robbins, for their help with the Kettering Leadership Academy. This past week, we had Public Safety Day, which is the best day of the whole thing. Our class got to experience a little bit of what it's like to be in our police and fire shoes and what they deal with, and it's always such an eye-opening day, and it's fun and it's just wonderful. So thank you to both chiefs. And I think that's it. I personally will be staying home on St. Patrick's Day, so don't worry about me. I'm good.
We won't worry about you then. Okay. Thank you. We are starting down the road for our strategic planning process, which we've been talking about for a while, and I want to thank the over 80 applicants who turned in applications to be on the steering committee for this job. It's, it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be a lot of fun, very exciting for the city of Kettering, and we will be pulling that steering committee together very, very soon. I did have a chance this week to attend the Reynolds &amp; Reynolds Annual Hockey Game, which is a fundraiser that they have at the Kettering Ice Arena. I have not been to it before. I believe you did it last year.
Yes.
Well, dropped the puck, and I got to drop the puck this year, and I didn't fall on... While doing it. Probably because they put a carpet out on the ice. But, so that was a great event, and it's neat to see a major business, one of our largest employees out there, employers, out there having a great time, and the place was packed with observers, so it was pretty cool. I wanted to, on sort of a sad but hopeful note, share with you the fact, you probably have noticed, our viewers, that we have had repeated excused absences for Bruce Duke. Bruce suffered a serious infection shortly after Christmas and has been in the hospital ever since. He has started to make some significant improvement. The latest report I had was very, very hopeful. As he continues to fight this, at Miami Valley Hospital, he may be moved to a long-term care facility sometime this week, possibly, but you all are invited, I talked to his wife, Jan, to tune into Carrying Bridges, which is a site, an internet site that people can sign up for to keep track of a loved one as they suffer from a serious illness. So it's Carrying Bridges, and I think everyone joins us in sending our love to Bruce. He would love cards. Visitors, somewhat restricted, but, and use your best judgment on that, but he would like to see people, and as he gets better and better, visitors will mean more and more to him. So with that, that concludes our meeting for tonight. We are not going to gavel the meeting shut because we are going into executive session. So thank you, and we will be here for our next scheduled meeting, which is on 28th. All right? Thank you.